Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 8th Village Board Meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces serving throughout the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first up tonight, we have a couple of public hearings. First public hearing is introductory local law number two of 2018, taxation. Desiree, could you please read the notice?
A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law two of 2018, amending chapter 277 entitled taxation, to opt out of the exemption for solar, wind, farm, and other energy systems pursuant to section 47 of the New York State Real Property Tax Law. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on February 27, 2018.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we'll go right out to the public. Anybody in the first row? Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Anybody in the fourth row? Anybody at all? Going once, going twice? Okay. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Desiree, could you please read the resolution?
Be it hereby resolved that, one, the proposed local law constitutes an unlisted action pursuant to secret; two, the proposed local law has no significant adverse environmental impacts and the board of hereby trustees hereby issues a negative declaration; three, the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the residents of the village and the board hereby adopts said local law number one of 2018 entitled taxation; and the village clerk is hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the village of Woodbury and to give due notice of the adoption to the Secretary of State of New York.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A motion to adopt local law one of 2018. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
It says introductory local law number two, right?
It's local law number one. Yeah, you're welcome. Trustee Mikhelyjak?
Aye.
Trustee Kraus?
Aye.
Trustee Flood?
Aye.
Trustee Egan?
Aye.
Mayor Quinan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, introductory law number three of 2018, tax cap override. Desiree, could you please read the notice?
A hearing is being held to entertain comments on introductory local law three of 2018 entitled tax cap override, to authorize the board of trustees to override the property tax cap as defined in section 3C of general municipal law for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 if needed. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on February 27, 2018.
Thank you. Anybody in the first row?
Can I just make a comment as the village treasurer?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Just want to note that the budget is currently being prepared, so figures are not available at this time to be able to know whether or not the tax cap is needed. So, as I mentioned at the last meeting when this was scheduled, I'm going to suggest that the board hold the hearing, close it, but not vote on it until the next meeting once we have a preliminary budget prepared.
Thank you again. Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Anybody in the fourth row? Anybody at all? Going once, going twice? Okay, could I have a motion to close the hearing?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A decision will be rendered at the March 22 meeting once the preliminary figures on the budget are known. Okay, next up, may I have a motion to accept our minutes from our meeting held February 22, 2018?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Desiree, could you please read abstract number 19?
Abstract 19 contains voucher 171696 through 171767 and totals $122,997.88.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve abstract number 19.
Make that motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve fire department equipment request 2018-4 totaling approximately $96 for reflecting lettering.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a request by the Woodbury Boy Scouts Troop 4 to use the meeting room on March 25, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for an Eagle Scout Cour de Honor ceremony.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not sure if I'm going to get this name right, but Mobile...
Mobility.
Mobility. So, it's Mobility?
Mobile Lite looks so much better.
Yeah. Mobility is seeking to build one small cell site within the village of Woodbury's right away. They are seeking to attach the equipment to an existing 45-foot pole, Orange Rockland Wooden Utility Pole, located at the corner of Turner Road and Corporate Drive. They have a license agreement with Orange and Rockland which allows their equipment to be attached to specific poles. They would like to install a small cell equipment on the side of the pole. On top of the pole will be an Omni antenna that has a height of 29.5 inches and a diameter of 4.7 inches. They currently have an application before the planning board and require direction from the village board in order to move forward. Okay, would you like to say anything before we... You're from Mobility, right? Okay.
My name is Paul Cosson, the permanent manager with Mobility. I mean, we spoke about this last time, and I guess the board was going to look at getting that approval. We need part of the resolution from the planning board is the board of trustees' approval to be in that right of way, so we're just looking for that and hoping for the board's approval.
Okay. I'm looking at this, but, you know... One of the things I'm looking at, was looking at the law, we've been advised by consultants about the ability to charge a leasing fee. So, we're trying to get furthermore information on that, and then we'll move forward rather quickly now. And the reason why I'm not going to make a decision tonight is that...
March 26?
Yeah, I believe it's the 26th.
Yeah, March 26. There's going to be a luncheon with all the leaders, municipal leaders from all the towns and villages in Orange County, and this is going to be a topic of discussion. So, rather than, you know, say something or agree to something now and then find out later, you know, I shouldn't have done that, not to say that's what I'm going to find out, I might find out that I should just go forward with it. But I'm not inclined to prohibit this, but I'm inclined to look for the best possible deal for the village of Woodbury I possibly can get. So, do you understand that?
Yeah, understand.
Do you have anything you want to add to that?
I mean, if you're looking for, sorry, lease terms or anything like that, if you want, I can send you that information. We've entered into leases with larger jurisdictions where you have numerous poles. The fees we pay aren't that high when you're looking at one site, so I could provide some of that background information if you want.
That would be great. Could you send it to the village clerk? Do you have her email address?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great if you could send that out as soon as possible, because like I said, after March 26, I'm going to be ready to move on this, okay?
Sure, that's fine. Yeah, and just within Orange County, we don't have any other agreements.
I know, but they're taking up the topic, so...
Oh, yeah, I'm just letting you know, tract-wise, I have nothing comparable within the area to...
So, I think there's other companies looking to do the same thing in other municipalities. So, it's something that they're going to discuss, and I just would like to get as much information as possible. And unfortunately, I wish we got that email actually late this afternoon. We probably would have called you and told you maybe to wait, but...
Sure.
I'm sorry about that. That I apologize for, but being that that opportunity is presented to me, I would be a fool not to, you know, take advantage of it.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anybody on the board have anything they want to ask, or... Molly's here.
I agree with them.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, you're looking at the second Thursday in April. Off the top of my head?
Twenty-second?
No, the second Thursday in April, not...
Oh, Thursday.
Yeah, it would be the 19th, I'm being told.
Nineteen? Ah, it can't be. That can't be.
April 12.
April 12.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry again for the delay.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion on a zone change request for Lakeside Affiliates. Highland Mills Center Group LLC and Lakeside Affiliates LLC has petitioned for the creation of a senior citizen housing overlay district to be placed over properties section 218, block 2, lots 7, 9, 10, 11, and 13. Is anybody here from... Please come up and...
Do you guys have business cards?
Yep.
Get that to you afterwards.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Barry Tarek.
Is the green light on, Barry?
No. Yes. My name is Barry Tarek.
You may want to get a little closer to the mic.
I'm the architect for the project. I'm here in Central Valley. I'm assuming you're familiar with what the proposal is. Currently, we have two separate buildings, three stories each, 14 units per floor, so we have 42 units per building. It's a mix, the entire project is a mix of one and two-bedroom units. I think it was 48 two-bedroom units and 36 one-bedroom units. They range in size and floor plan arrangements. They're for active adult, 55 and over. It's not an assisted living project. It's rentals at fair market value. You know, my personal experience with projects of this nature, I've been involved in several in the area over the past few years, and there is a demand. In fact, I'm the architect for Canterbury Greens in Cornwall, and I spoke to the owner of that project today, and he's rented out. There's 64 units there, I think. He's rented out. I'm involved in, I was the architect for Blue Stone Commons also. I don't know, I'm not going to say 100%, but I know out of the six buildings, the first three were totally rented out. We went into phase two, and I think there's still demand there. The units are laid out for very standard, well, I don't want to say standard, but, you know, typical open floor plan arrangements, living room kitchens, decks, high-end finishes inside, granite, wood. The building has an elevator, and it'll have, I don't know, we can call it a rec room, library, gathering room space available to all the tenants. The plan is still evolving. There's some other public spaces available in the building for other amenities, outdoor parking. It's a combination of, I guess what I'm saying, it's a good average demand project, so I don't know, I guess we can open up for questions and...
All right, everyone question, Barry. Did you say one building or two buildings right now?
The site plan is for two buildings. There's been discussion for phasing the project, which I think Nick can get into a little better than I can, but it's two, you know, for the most part, identical buildings of 42 units each is what the master plan is.
Two buildings and how many units in each building?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, so...
Right.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four total.
I can do the math. They can't see if I have my, I have my shoes off, I'm counting.
What's the facade of that building going to be? Is that going to be...
It's a combination of, it's a combination of masonry, and right now, it's showing vinyl siding. It's, you know, that's up for design and discussion.
Well, that would be a very important feature because of the location of this being kind of right on 32. We'd like it, you know, the aesthetics of it would be very important, and I'm sure the planning board will do a great job on that, but that is important, so...
Yeah, we want it to be an attractive building also, so... I don't know if you want to talk about...
Anybody, any other questions?
Want to talk about any of the site stuff or phasing or...
Just to go into a little bit of detail about the site layout.
Excuse me, what's your name?
Nick Argneta from Peter's Zack and File Engineering. So, as you can see from the plan, we have, you know, we're going in with the two buildings, and the plan is to phase it out if necessary. And for the first building, I guess if they got to 75% occupancy, you know, they would be able to construct the second building depending on demand. And as you can see, you know, we just cut off the parking for the first building, and then they would just continue on, you know, to the second if needed and when the time comes, so...
Any questions by any board members?
I'm very familiar with the project. I'm good.
I still have a question about, so the idea is, is one building would be built now?
Yes.
When that building reached the, what, the capacity?
Roughly like 75%.
Seventy-five percent.
About 75%. And then, the second one would be built?
Would be constructed, yeah, and the remaining parking areas.
If this was to go forward with the planning, for the planning board, you would be coming with a plan for one building?
No, we would be doing full design for the entire project.
You'd be doing full design?
Yeah.
So, if we were to approve a zoning change, we'd be approving it for two buildings?
Yes.
And not the phased-in?
Well, it would be the two, it would be the total, the two buildings. You know, the phasing would just be for when they start, you know, they would build the one building, and then they would, you know, like I said, upon 75%, you know, once they fill it up, they would build the second building.
The planning board would control that by, by their resolutions.
Yeah, the phasing would be a conditional resolution.
Yeah, that's why I want to see it as conditional, not that if we were to approve a zoning change or to apply the senior zoning to the...
They still have...
It wouldn't necessarily be two buildings going up.
Well, we'd be a plan, we'd be, they're requesting the zone change, we would give them or not give them a zone change for the two buildings. The planning board would place a condition on the, on the site plan.
All we're doing is giving them an overlay district for senior housing.
Right, that's it.
The planning board would really be carrying the bulk of the...
Workload on the development.
Workload on, on the development and planning, so... I mean, right now, like what we're doing tonight, if we decide we want to go forward, we would tell Desiree and we'd be scheduling a joint meeting between the planning board and the village board.
As well as all the public hearing?
Yeah, well, that would be, I'm sorry, we'd be scheduling a public hearing with the village board and the planning board.
To discuss the zone change.
Yes.
We're just, tonight, we're deciding whether or not we want to move forward to that next step of the public hearing, the joint meeting with the planning board to discuss.
That is correct.
You'd be asked, if you want to move forward, we would have the attorney draft a local law, and a joint public hearing would be held with the planning board to entertain the zone change district overlay, and at the end, that resulting of that planet, of that public hearing could result in you adopting the law or, or not adopting the law. But there would have to be a local law for the zone change.
So, right now, I would like to see if we would have, everybody's in agreement to move forward with the joint meeting for the local law, so we can move forward.
I'm interested in having a public hearing on the issue. So, I should get a motion on this, right? Or just...
You probably, I think it would be appropriate to get a motion to authorize your attorney to draft the local law, as well as authorizing me to try to schedule all 10 of you to be able to have a meeting together.
So moved.
Well, yeah, let me, let me ask for a motion for our attorney to draft the local law and to schedule a joint public hearing with the planning board and the village board.
Not to schedule it, because you don't have a date and time yet to...
I'm sorry, to schedule it.
Coordinate and get some dates and times, just for me to work on that.
Okay, let me amend that motion and say to, for the village clerk to schedule a public hearing with the village board and the planning board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Do you have business cards?
Yeah, you guys, yeah, thanks.
You said you had a business card, right?
I just want to get you guys' names right for the meeting.
It's worth going ahead, but I'm still, I'm still confused. They told us one.
Have a good night.
And ours, they told, I made a suggestion with him that they do two phases. They like the idea.
We'll see, we'll see what comes up. We'll see what happens and things.
Okay.
Yeah. Right.
We're going to move along now, guys. Gentlemen? Neil?
Ready for you, Mayor?
Neil?
We're ready. I'll get him. All right.
Okay. Okay, various actions on timber trail dedications. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to declare the board of trustees to be the lead agency under SECA in connection with the acceptance of the Timber Trail Drainage and Snow Removal Easement, Sanitary Sewer Easement, and Parcel B.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I'm not going to ask for discussion on this. If anybody wants discussion on any item, just say you'd like to discuss something. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I just have a question about the letter. It's dated 2017. It should be 2018.
The project started in 2017.
So, that is from 2017.
These are the documents from, that's, I just gave you the letter, so you have a point of reference for the meeting.
No problem, I was just looking for clarification.
Yeah, but the documents from Kelly are all currently dated.
Great, thanks.
Okay, next up, motion declaring the acceptance of the Timber Trail Drainage and Snow Removal Easement, Sanitary Sewer Easement, and Parcel B as an unlisted action under SECA.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to issue a negative declaration to set actions as they will have no significant adverse environmental impacts as demonstrated by the environmental assessment form.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Drainage and Snow Removal Easement.
Motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Sanitary Sewer Easement.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign any and all documentation necessary to transfer Parcel B to the village as shown on the Timber Trail plat as conditionally approved by the village planning board.
Make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to authorize the mayor to sign the offer of dedication for the road in the Timber Trail subdivision, and noting specifically that this is not accepting the road, but rather allows the offer of the road to be filed with the county clerk's office.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, the White Gant Hill Water Tank. Des, could you please read the bid?
The bid opening was held on February 13, 2018, and the notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on January 18, 2018. The following bid was received, Dutchland Incorporated from Gap PA in the amount of $994,500. Do you want me to go into the other part? After consultation with the village attorney, the village engineer reached out to Dutchland Incorporated to negotiate their price since the bid was significantly higher than what was budgeted for this project. The revised bid amount is now $800,000, and there is a letter on file from Dutchland Incorporated confirming this. The letter states in short that the work will be completed in conformance with the contract documents with the following exceptions. One, the allowance for poor soils on the original bid will be removed from the scope of work. Two, the listed subcontractors and their bid package is subject to change. And three, or equals, may be submitted for the tank mixing system due to the time constraints being faced for this project and the condition of these existing well. It is recommended by the village consultants to award the bid to Dutchland Inc. at the negotiated amount so the project can begin immediately.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the bid of $800,000 from Dutchland, Inc. This is for the Highland, I'm sorry, the White Gant Hill Water Tank, which we are going to replace this year.
And we should note, this is what we bonded for as well, so the money's being paid from the bonds that we secured late last year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. We really need it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on a zone change request by B. Admed. This is a request for amendments regarding minimum lot area for hotels/ motels in a limited or the LC zoning district. The location is New York State Route 32 and Turner Road, section block and lot 226.16.1 and lots 7 and 8.
Just do a quick intro and turn it over to you. Good evening, board members and Madam Clerk. Thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. My name is Will Frank. I represent Mr. Bill Ahmad, who's here with us tonight, and also here is Steve Esposito, engineer for the project, potential project at this point. Our client, Mr. Ahmad, is in the process of negotiating to acquire the three parcels that the mayor just mentioned, and towards that end, the interest is to develop a hotel project on that property. Our client is a seasoned veteran of the hotel industry. He's built and operates hotels in Oneonta and in Cooperstown and a couple of other locations. And the current zoning situation in the village would not allow for the construction of a hotel based on square footage limits and things of that nature, so the mayor graciously met with us previously to just talk about some concepts, and we told the mayor that Mr. Esposito would come up with some renderings to see if there was any interest of this board for us to go further. So, that's really the purpose of being here tonight, is to introduce the potential project to the board, see where we're at, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve. He's going to give a bit of a presentation. I'm going to go sit down with my client. If you have any questions, we will, of course, be happy to answer whatever we can tonight. So, thank you, and I'll let Steve take over from here.
Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to discuss this potential project. The site is located at Turner, at the intersection of Turner Road and Route 32. I'm sure everybody's pretty much familiar with it. It consists of three tax parcels, and it's just a little over an acre in the aggregate, and... This is Route 32 here, and it's on Turner Road. Interesting, one of the, you know, one of the criteria that you have, one of the, in the provision in your code is for hotels, and one of the things you have to have is a minimum 100 feet of frontage on a state or county highway. This is one of the few sites, you know, that are, that have that ability to meet that criteria. What we're proposing is a hotel somewhere, we'd like to build somewhere in the neighborhood of 110 to 130 rooms, inside amenities, possibly meeting rooms. If that's the case, the number of rooms may go down a little bit to provide for a small convention center or meeting area. The proposed building with this footprint would likely be a four-story building with a maximum height of approximately 48 feet. Right now, in the LC zone, the minimum, or the maximum building height is 35 feet, but in order to meet the development requirements or development coverage, we would need to go to four stories. That's also the typical model for the two of the, two of the motel chains that my client is looking at for the site. The other issue is, we have a couple of zoning issues. The first, that building height is one. The second one is lot area. The current code is very punitive when it comes to calculating minimum lot area for hotels. And my experience in the town, most, all zones, just not the LC zone, suffer from that affliction. So, in our particular case, if we just use 130 rooms as a model, the minimum lot area is, that you have to have for a hotel, which is special use in the zone permitted, but a special use, has to have two acres. So, that's number one. And then, in this particular zone, any unit over 12 units has to have an additional 5,000 square feet of site area. So, in this, in this particular case, we would need, that would equate to just the room acreage would come up to be 13.5 acres. You add the two acres, that's the acreage for the minimum lot area for that particular use, and you're up to over 15 and a half acres. As I said, this site is 1.4 acres, or 1.1 acres, but we know that we can adequately fit on a hotel of that, you know, that range of sizes, that range of size with the amenity package and required parking on a site that has 100 linear feet of road access on a state We would love to fill out and submit a petition for a zone change, but unfortunately, you have another section in the code, which is 310-52B, which requires anybody petitioning for a zone change, that you have to control 50% of that zone. Obviously, our three sites, even in the aggregate, don't come close to having 50% of the LC zone. So, as a potential developer, we don't have the ability to formally petition your board for a zone change. So, really, I guess what we're requesting tonight is if there's any interest in, in the board to... Oh, I'm sorry, three acres, that's right. There was, the total acreage of the site is 3.1 acres. There was a 1.1 acre, one acre and one acre. My apologies. But still, we're a little short. But again, we, you know, it's, my client is a seasoned, you know, developer in this type of land use. You know, the 3.1 acres is more than adequate to develop, you know, this size facility. And unfortunately, we would love to submit a petition tomorrow for a zone change, but we don't have the ability to do that, because we're well below the 50% as required for, you know, control of the zone.
You answered the first question, because I thought that was over three acres.
Yes.
In aggregate. But the second question that I had, you mentioned conference space or convention space. Would that include a restaurant in that hotel?
Would you okay if my client came in?
Sure, yes.
This is Bill.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bill Ahmad.
Speak, speak.
And just, first of all, I would like to let you know, back in 1990, I used to live in this area. I used to work at the gas station in the middle of town on Route 211 when the Galleria Mall was being built. So, I, then I moved to Hancock, which is about 75 miles from here. I lived 10 years there. Then I moved to Cooperstown, and I've been in Cooperstown for the last 18 years. So, this area, I used to live in New Windsor back in 1990. So, originally, no lot that put this area, so that's why, from that far, I'm coming back this area. So, right now, I have verbal approval, which is written approval from them without the license from Marriott, for Marriott Courtyard. So, Marriott Courtyard includes a bistro, which have a breakfast and a bistro-style dinner. There's no lunch. And if we can make it work, we will eliminate some of the rooms, and we'll see what is the capacity of the parking lot. Based on that, we will see how many rooms we can, how many, the meeting room, how many people, meeting room, we can accommodate on that facility. 200, 250, 300, depends on the parking spaces.
Thank you.
And everything else, I guess, they know more than I do, and if you guys have any question...
No, this is for Steve. Steve, you said about the, what? Oh, okay. You said you needed to control 50% of the LC zone to request a zone change?
Yes. In the, in your code, you have a, there's a section of the code, 310-52B.
I thought it was 50% of the property being zoned, changed.
I think it reads of the zone.
Let's find out.
The, there's three ways that you could go, three ways that the zoning can be amended. Either the village board, you know, during its review, you know, as your comprehensive plan says, every five to 10 years, you know, review the comp plan, see if there's any changes to the zoning that needs to be done, you know, through local laws, which you regularly do. The other, the other one opportunity for zone changes could be from recommendations from the planning board. You know, if they see this, certain things continually arise, they could make suggestions or recommendations to the village board to, you know, modify the zone, you know, for whatever reason. And the third is through petition. Landowners have the ability to petition for the zone change. But as we read that section of the code, it appears that you have to control 50% of that zone, which makes it very tough for anyone, really.
That's correct.
To make any change, you know, or any petition.
On petition, duly signed and acknowledged with the owners of 50% or more of the area in any district requesting amendment, change, or modification of the regulations, including the zoning map application prescribed for such district, the village board may hold a public hearing, etc., etc.
So...
Steve's right. Well, I would think that it could be upon us as the village board to correct that.
Yeah.
If we so desire.
Listen, yeah, I just got one question about 226-1-6.2. What's the deal with that lot? That's the lot...
The other corner lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have an extra... Yeah, as of right now, our client is looking at the three lots to the north that, you know, total 3.1 acres.
Okay. I was just curious, what's going on with that lot?
Well, I don't see a problem with this. I would like to see that hotel there. I wouldn't, well, I should say, I wouldn't mind seeing a hotel there. And you're saying it's gonna be a courtyard?
Yes.
That's the flag? So, let me ask you this. The, what I have in front of me originally, before you handed me this, was that you were looking for, let's see, a lot area, no... Minimum lot area. So, you're looking for variance on the lot area?
Well...
Or you're looking for us, while we're changing the zoning, to just deal with that too?
Well, what we would prefer, because, is that either the board take action to amend the 50%, because I, this has come up on another unrelated project, also within the village, to see if there was any, if any desire to amend that, and be able to evaluate each petition, you know, on its own, in its own merit. And that, that would be great, because we could move forward, knowing that that was, would occur. We could then form a petition right behind that, and, you know, for our zone, for our minimum lot area change. Or our other alternative is, you know, seeking a variance from the zoning board of appeals, but when the zoning board of appeals have to weigh a variance, you know, there's a five-way test that they have to apply, and two of them, one is, is it self-created hardship?
Of course it is.
It is. And secondly, is it substantial? And, you know, right now, as we standard, it's pretty substantial, given the way the law is written.
90% variance, something like that.
Well, even if we were to entertain a zoning change, it would require a variance for the height, which would be a very significant variance.
Well, we will, we would, we would actually...
Given our current requirement of 35 feet, and your proposal's 60.
No, no, we're, we're actually, we recommended that you should look at that as a, as an amendment, but we're, it would be a four-story building, and we're gonna be somewhere between 42 and 48 feet in height.
I think the...
I'm just going off of what you gave us. It says 60 feet.
It does in the document, but I think, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think the right way to approach this, from my perspective, would be for us as a board to amend or correct 310-52B to, to allow you, as a petitioner, to bring forth a requested zone change, once that was amended, to give you the legal right to do that. And then, you could come before us and request a zone change for one or more of these particular issues, to avoid you having to go before the ZBA. That would be how I would like to see it happen.
One thing, I know, well, Steve, Steve made reference to it, but he is before, and I'm not sure if it's either zoning or planning, on another site in that area, also for a hotel that's going to need some amendments and some changes. I would suggest that rather we do, rather than do this, this lot, that lot, this project or something, is take a more comprehensive look...
I agree.
...at the area, maybe starting at Turner Road or wherever, Bond Street, Turner Road or whatever, and take a look at that area going south, and see if we want to do one...
Overlay or something like that. I agree. I don't want to just get into...
It's a different part. It's the commercial area of Woodbury, and it seems like...
Even east of 32 from Bond Street down or something like that.
There's other, there's other, I think, height variances that projects are looking for and stuff like that, that we take a look at that in a more comprehensive way, rather than just one project at a time, that we do something...
I agree. This is similar to something I talked about a couple of weeks ago.
Well, I have no argument with that. I, I think that's the best approach. We've been discussing the height for hotels for quite a while now, probably close to a year. We've had, had discussions with the fire department. They don't seem to have a problem. But one, one of the issues is gonna be a new ladder truck eventually, with 100-foot ladder, I believe. Right now, we only have a 75-foot ladder. So, that's something that's also gonna have to be addressed as part of this, you know, war going forward about being able to somehow fund, not one individual, but anybody who's taking advantage of this type of development, like a hotel, anything over a certain amount of feet, would have to contribute somehow towards... Yeah, we could work that out, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, what are you looking for, from us tonight? I mean, I'm, I'm willing to move forward, looking at these issues, the 310-52B and height requirement.
I think that that's, if, you know, we're here tonight to, to start this dialogue and to see, and if we can do anything to assist you in, in making, doing your analysis. But we, that's, we're here to, to hear this, and, you know, it's very positive from our end, so...
I mean, what entire, Mike, what I, I would suggest is maybe we might want to have a work session with the planning board. You know, not necessarily a public, you know, a, a public...
Hearing.
Hearing or anything, but a work session with the planning board members and us to take a look at this, the whole area down there, and see what's maybe being planned and stuff like that. Just schedule a thing where we just have...
Something we can look into.
A work session.
Councilman, I'm sorry, trustee, that's kind of read my mind, because it, this is obviously, as Steve said, what we're here tonight is to gauge interest. You know, it'd be one thing if, if the board said, nah, we're not interested in that kind of project here, thanks for coming in, but what we're hearing is some, you know, some positive feedback on it. We would be happy to, you know, when the time came, to participate in a work session, and maybe, maybe give, from the, from the hotel developer's side, some of the things that would be of concern to them, that the board could either address or say, no, we don't want to do that, as we're, you know, changing the code a little bit, whether there's, and when your attorney works with you, whether there's gonna be any kind of slight amendment to the comprehensive plan itself, to allow for different things, whether it's different setbacks, different height restrictions. We understand that it's, it's a special permit use in the LC zone, and we're certainly not looking to get around that. Obviously, the planning board and all the relevant boards would want to have to take a close look at this project. We would provide whatever information we could, and, you know, we'd be happy to participate in the process, whatever you want us to do.
Okay.
So, I think that's the story for tonight.
Well, I think we'll, we'll let you know, and I appreciate the offer, but I think we'll start working on this internally with our consultants.
Yeah, for sure.
And get the ball rolling, and then, if we need any assistance from you, we'll reach out to you.
That'd be great, great.
Is that good?
We appreciate your time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, we're gonna continue to move on. Okay, next up, we need to schedule a public hearing for the Orange County Community Development Grant for fiscal year 2019. So, could I have a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held March 22, 2018, at 7:00 PM, to entertain public suggestions for projects that would be suitable to apply for funding through the 2018 Orange County Community Development Grant?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, water easement. Our village engineer and the water and sewer department have completed a review of a water easement on Section Block and Lot 214-8-3 being granted to the village of Woodbury. They found the plan, description, and survey to be accurate. So, could I have a motion to authorize me to sign the documents for the water easement for Section 214, Block 8, Lot 3, and 7, Field Map Number 14-70, Second Street?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion to authorize the village clerk to advertise for bids for a water and sewer prefab building. Funds for this building were included in the bond secured last year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our business for this evening, so we're gonna go to public comment. And before we do that, I would just like to make a statement... And before we do that, I would just like to make a statement. At the last meeting, a discussion between the board and the resident got a bid out of hand, and for that, I apologize. This board has always encouraged individuals to speak at a meeting about any topic they choose, whether it's on the agenda or not. The board members will listen to your comments and take them into consideration. If you have questions instead of comments, each board member always remains after the meeting to speak to any individual one-on-one and to try to answer any questions you may have. So as always, this board always invites people to get up and speak, and we do not limit or restrict what topics you want to discuss. With that, I'm gonna go out. Anybody in the first row? Well, you have to go up to the podium. You have to announce who you are.
Dominic Prizzillo, chief of the Woodbury Fire Department. And as of March fifth, I appointed Father Joseph Tyrell as chaplain of the Woodbury Fire Department. The position has been vacant since the priest over at the United Methodist Church left, which was, let's see, there was Guy Ollinger, and then there was Kurt Watkins, who was the chaplain, and he moved out of town, and we haven't had one since. And according to our best practices, we can put one in, so Father Tyrell from St. Pat's was willing to do it for us. He doesn't hold any firefighting skills, and he's not in the department to do that. It's mostly for grief counseling in the event of any type of emergency. He's there for moral support for the members of the fire department. It's in our best practices. What I did is I wrote a letter to the mayor, and I brought a copy of the best practices to show you, so.
Well, thank you, Donnie, and we're all in, in favor of the fire department having a chaplain and grief counselor. However, I think we need to have a, a meeting on this issue, not tonight, but, you know, maybe sometime next week, have a meeting on this, to discuss it further.
I believe we do, the department has a council meeting with the two liaisons.
Right.
So maybe it could be discussed at that meeting.
Actually, yes, they will probably discuss it with, with you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody in the second row? Anybody at all? I'm not gonna go to every row, I'm just, anybody, anybody want to get up and speak?
Be faster if you just did a vocal.
All right, with that, Maria, you have anything?
You're coming.
Jess? Buddy?
Not just that, as always, I'd like to thank Rob and the, the Highway Department for a great job they did yesterday in the, in the storm, for all the hard-working hours they put in keeping the road safe for all of us.
Thank you. Neil?
And Rob is usually here, and I think it's evidence that the time he put in and his, and his guys put in and stuff. There are other municipalities in the area that the roads still are not clear. Our roads were clear and dry and safe for the residents, and I want to echo Buddy's thing to, to Rob and all the guys in, actually, Sewer Department, Water and Sewer, and the Highway, the Highway, all chipped in, and just, that, that's what Woodbury is about.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
I can't top that, I agree. Tim?
I'm good, thank you. Nothing else to say.
Does, you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to announce that the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, Commerce is holding a community event on April twenty-first at the Falkirk Inn. It is a murder mystery dinner. It's fifty dollars per person. You can reserve your seats with me at Town Hall, or there is a flyer that's circulating throughout town to do so. Again, it's a community event. Based on our past experiences with our pancake breakfasts and our pasta dinners, it seems that this community thrives and, and wants these community events more and more. So the Chamber is one of the organizations that is stepping up and planning them, so this community can come together and be the, be a great Woodbury. So if you're interested, you can reach out to me at Town Hall, Chamber's website, again, it's fifty dollars per person, murder mystery dinner, includes buffet dinner, and the show, cash bar.
When is the murder, again?
The murder?
It's in the first fifteen minutes.
Did you say, when is it, or who was being murdered? It's April twenty-first.
Thank you.
Six to nine.
Now, now I know the ending.
If you need somebody murdered, I can know a guy.
Okay, we're a little in control here. All right. I just want to wrap up by, again, thanking the Highway Department. Also, as Neil mentioned, Water and Sewer Department was out there during the storm too. And also, the Fire Department was out there a few times, especially last Friday, they were very busy. So everybody did a great job, and, you know, we're very fortunate to have great employees, so we should all thank, you know, our lucky stars, that we have these type of people out there working for us. Anyway, with that, I'm gonna ask for an adjournment, so could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.